City Council Meeting of September 15th to Order 2009. Will you please stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance with us? Please call a roll.
Council Agency Member Falcone, Francisco Horton, Houghs, Schneider Williams.
Here.
Mayor Chair Bloom.
Here.
Item One, Proclamation Declaring September 2009 as National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month.
It is kind of ironic. Oh, well, we won't dwell on that one. Just had a medical marijuana dispensary hearing, a conversation. That's a better one. Okay, so now we're talking about a proclamation and it's September, which is National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month. Whereas treatment and recovery improve the community's welfare and provide a renewed look on life for those who struggle with substance use disorders and for their family and friends. Twenty-three point two million people aged 12 or older in the U.S. needed treatment for substance abuse disorder in 2007, and 5.4 million adults also suffered from a concurrent mental illness. Studies have indicated that 8.9 percent of people who made an effort to get treatment but did not receive it were concerned that receiving treatment might cause neighbors or community members to have negative opinions of them. However, most say they would not have a negative opinion of a relative or friend in recovery from addiction. Resources exist online and in our community to increase people's awareness about how substance use disorders affect children, families, and our society. Such education is essential to overcoming misconceptions and achieving long-term recovery. To help achieve this goal, Santa Barbara's Fighting Back Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse, Santa Barbara County Alcohol and Drug Program Providers invite all residents of Santa Barbara to participate in the National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month in September. By virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, I proclaim September 2009 as National Alcoholism and Drug Addiction Recovery Month and call upon all the people of Santa Barbara to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies supporting recovery in our community. And I thank you so much for being here. I'll let you introduce yourself and speak. You're welcome.
I'm Shereen Catapooch with the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse and Fighting Back, and this community does celebrate recovery, and we're so fortunate to live in a community that has community leaders and so many caring citizens and organizations. You're probably familiar with the many organizations that have come together and sponsored all kinds of wonderful activities this month to promote and celebrate recovery. I don't know if there here are posters here?
I didn't see them.
The Daniel Bryant Youth and Family Treatment Center have made posters telling their stories and also celebrating their recovery. Anyway, I'll keep my comments brief, but really I just wanted to thank you for your recognition of recovery. Recovery is possible, treatment works, and we are so fortunate to live in a community that supports treatment and recovery. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, I just want to say that there are these great recovery events, apparently twice a month at the Veterans Memorial Building. I went to the yearly big one yesterday evening, presided over by our wonderful county staff, and it was incredibly empowering. There were some incredible stories of people who had been through terrible things, you know, been a heroin, using heroin since age 13, and making it through and finally coming out on the other side, and that was an incredible event to be at.
Well, I think it's very important that people know out there that there is help and that they can get it, and in our community, we're very caring, we're a very good community, and we need to help people instead of having them be ashamed, because that doesn't work at all. I think that most people know that I lost a brother and sister both to alcohol and drug abuse, and it's really a tough one even now for me to talk about 20-some years later. So, it's, you know, it's not okay to lose people to this because there is help out there and they can recover, so, very important. So, if anybody calls us, we'll send them over to you. Is that okay? Good. Okay, item number two, please.
Employee Recognition Service Award pins.
Okay, Ms. Ken.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, I'm pleased to recognize individual employees with the City of Santa Barbara who are celebrating anywhere from five to 30 years of service with the city. And I'd like to read the names. Those celebrating five years are John Martoni in Finance, Liz Scott in Police, Cheryl Pearson at the Library, Rick Fulmer in Public Works. Those celebrating 10 years are Jeff Burns in Fire, Kel Harden in Fire, Kevin Hockum at the Fire Department, Justin Williams also at the Fire Department, Jose Delgado in Public Works, Joaquin Ortega in Public Works, and Jose Rodriguez at the Airport. And then for 20 years, Danny Cato in Community Development, I think you just heard from him at the Ordinance Committee, and Tim Gash in Public Works. And then 25 years, Owen Thomas in Public Works, who also serves as the engineer out at the airport and the terminal project. And then with 30 years, Tom Haynes at the Fire Department.
Congratulations.
And those individuals will all receive their pins at their department.
Right. Thank you very much. Congratulations to everybody. Some of these are 30, 25, 20 years, that's a lot, so, congratulations.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
In the past, when we've had somebody here who has come to us with that kind of 30 years, 25 and 30 years worth of service, we've taken a moment, and especially when we have some of our fire service folks come here, and it's just remarkable that they have been giving us that service for that long. And when they're in the room, we stand and we give them a standing applause. I'd like us to just take a moment and do that for both of those.
Okay, that works.
This is for Owen Thomas and Thomas Haynes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Changes to the agenda, I think?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there is one change to the agenda, and that will be when we get to the Consent Calendar, item number 11, which is Approving Cost Sharing. Staff received a little bit of additional information on Friday morning, so there's some minor adjustments to the report. You have those minor adjustments, but we just wanted to share them with the public.
Okay, we'll pull that off when we get to that. And public comment, I have several people who would like to speak. We'll start with Kate Smith, followed by Ruth Wilson.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Santa Barbara City Council, there is blessed unrest among the citizenry of the United States. Our government has self-aggrandized to the point that the bulk of our tax dollars goes to support the government, a machine, and the publicly employed, and their own interests. The money is not trickling down to the people to assist our communities' well-being. The situation with our youth, not thriving in school, being criminalized, the situation with those who are elderly, disabled, addicted, mentally ill, poor, or homeless, not being served, the people like bread are rising. Santa Barbara is the perfect storm of injustice. The school administrators have lost sight of the education mission. We are in the process of transforming our schools to child-centered, teacher-directed, parent-involved schools. We need your help. There's a meeting of the Youth and Children's Committee, and Doss Williams said, "Oh, we know there's a problem with the Santa Barbara School District, but they say there's no problem, so there's nothing we can do." Yes, Doss Williams, Mayor Bloom, there is something you can do. You can investigate our allegations, and you can support our solutions. I spent last Sunday with a management consultant from the EOP, that's the Office of the President, and we have a committed community organizer who wrote the book, Finding Your Inner Lennon. So I'm asking you to join the people of Santa Barbara. We are amassing online, we are organizing with John's help, we are planning with, I'm not allowed to mention names unless I have preapproval, and I never have preapproval, so my lips are sealed, but please visit sbschooltalk.com for school corruption exposure. Please visit, just let me give the two other websites. Visit applecorepress.ning for education reform, that's the apple core, and visit Santa Barbara JAR, that stands for Justice, Action, and Reform, for the restoration of justice and democracy in our schools and our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ruth Wilson will be followed by Judy Cardinal.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council Members. There were supposed to be two of me, one to pray and one to talk about the homeless. I'll try and do both as quickly as I can. Certainly prayer comes first. I am here to pray for you, Council Members, Madam Mayor, that you would have the Spirit of God, God's discernment on all the issues that are coming before you, and I just pray that for this whole community. In Jesus' name, amen. I had an email from Ken Williams. I consider Ken a really a very good expert on the homeless. He's been doing this for 30 years, and he has been consistently letting us know when people die. And he writes this last Thursday, "Today's Independent is reporting that both victims of this week's train fatalities were homeless, with the second person exhibiting possible signs of mental illness. This being so, the count of the homeless deaths so far this year now stands at 24, which is 33 percent, 33, yeah, 33 percent higher than all of last year, and 71 percent higher than Santa Monica's average of 14, a city roughly comparable to ours. I apologize to so often be the bearer of such tragic news," he says, "but I feel strongly that our community not go gentle down the road where the homeless suffer and die alone, unnoticed and neglected. They deserve better than that, and we should expect more of ourselves and our community." Now, I particularly want to add a footnote of mine. I really have been praying about this, and I think the real need here, and I think many people will agree with this, is more beds. I don't even think putting more social workers out there is an answer. I talked to Ken Williams about this. He said, "Where are we going to put them? You get more social workers, where do they direct them?" And you know, the ones that are dying and that are ill are the ones that are sleeping out, and there is no place for them. So I really am appealing to the whole community, I mean, we're on television here, to think out of the box about this, because it's unsafe out there at night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Judy Cardinal will be followed by Cruzita Cruz.
My name is Judy Cardon. I'm a member of Mission Canyon Chapter, our local chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, or the DAR. And I'm here to let the Council know of two important celebrations that are going on this week. The week of September 17th through 23rd has been proclaimed Constitution Week by the President. This is the 202nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America. The DAR encourages all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. Secondly, the California State Society of the DAR will be dedicating audio tour eco-boxes at the Condor exhibit at the Santa Barbara Zoo this Friday, September 18th. These boxes are programmed with multiple educational messages, can be easily updated, and are cranked by hand. Please look for those boxes when you next visit the zoo, and thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thanks for your work. Cruzita Herrera Cruz, followed by David Daniel Diaz.
Good afternoon, Mayor Bloom, Council Members. Yo soy Cruzito Herrera Cruz, y vengo al Consilio para hablar un punto en español, and then my comments will be in English, in short, concise form.
Thank you.
Entonces yo soy Cruzito Herrera Cruz, ¿cómo están el público que están escuchando los teléventes? Estoy corriendo para el concejal, para las elecciones de la ciudad de Santa Barbara de este condado. Yo soy concejal después de mi victoria contra las ciudad administradoras de las elecciones que están presentes aquí, y con el fiscal, el señor Stephen Philip Wiley. El señor Lafferty en el departamento cinco en la corte superior rindió una decisión en mi favor, que ahora mi nombre va a aparecer en el folleto pal concejal el 3 de noviembre 2009. Muchas gracias. Good afternoon. My name is Cruzito Herrera Cruz. I am the 13th candidate. I would like to make my statements for public record and for the citizens and the residents of the City of Santa Barbara that I am the 13th candidate for Santa Barbara City Council elections. After my pre-election legal victory that I had in the Superior Court of California against the City Hall, its election administrators, and Mr. Stephen Philip Wiley, I thank Judge Department Five, Mr. Lafferty, for his decision in rendering his decision in my favor of validating my name so he could appear in the City Council race for this November 3rd, 2009 election. And so with this legal victory, I'd like to state on record that the democratic process does work, and I should align myself with the Daughters of American Revolution, because I did believe in the Constitution and the spirit of the law. This is my entire work product. The cost savings that I caused the city by doing it improper and forma pro perez has been in the thousands of dollars as attorney fees. However, this work product also represents my initiative, my aggressiveness, but my prudence and steadfastness to be an elected official for the City of Santa Barbara, so I could represent the youth of our community and their wishes.
Thank you.
At the same time, I thank you, Mr. Wiley, I thank you too for always being cordial in your communication with me. Have a good afternoon. Vote for Cruzito Herrera Cruz.
We also, we want to congratulate, we want to congratulate you on your, on getting your name on the ballot. That's what it was about, and we congratulate you for that. And we wanted to note that the judge said that the city attorney, the city clerk didn't do anything wrong. It was a matter of questioning some signatures, and you brought in affidavits, which I thought was very wonderful. I love it when people are, you know, standing up for themselves, which is what you did, and I congratulate you.
And there's not so much to credit for me, but really for the 13 petition signers, once again, that gave their vote of confidence that validated some of my signatures. However, there was constitutional and legal arguments that I did pose that weren't considered.
Right.
Due to the suppression of 88 nomination petition signers, because I originally filed 280.
Sometimes you've got to learn, especially as an elected official, not to talk too much. So you're now getting into stuff that's not on record.
It's just for the record, and it's nothing, it is nothing, I'm not bending the truth here, ma'am, but I understand.
Well, no, but you're talking about stuff that wasn't really talked about.
You have a good day.
Thank you. Daniel Diaz, David Daniel Diaz, followed by Bonnie Raisner. And we don't usually clap in here, so can you please hold your clapping to outside? I'm glad he's on the ballot. He did a good job with that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
(Inaudible).
Kate, you need to take that outside, too.
Okay, good afternoon. First of all, in the back room, there's a lot of noise, and it's a bit distracting for those of us who are sitting in the back. I don't know if it's being recorded on television back there, but it's a little loud. So I'll look them on the way out to lower their voices a little.
Well, they have, they probably have the TV on in there waiting for us. Yeah, that's all.
Okay. Okay. I was going over some issues with some people up in Mission Canyon this morning, and they were suggesting that I discuss the issue and how the Spanish brought the slaves up from Mexico because they couldn't trust the Indians in this region, and so they were just annihilating them left and right. And I discovered a couple days ago that, and I correlated this to the zoning issues that have been ongoing, and yes, this will be my little election punch until November. Apparently, one of the vendors got fined twice, and it was $300, and to top it off, which is a double jeopardy case in my opinion, is the landlord also got fined $300. Now, what relevance there is between the landlord having to pay for the tenant, the landlord is not the tenant's keeper. I think the city should reimburse the restaurant in question the $300, because there's no reason to be double fining everyone, and is this a way of magically getting rid of constituents and business owners in the community by creating this double fine? I was quite shocked. And so far, the scorecard is with the little postcard I gave to asking if anyone on the board is interested in releasing and relieving pressure on the signage in restaurants locally. So far, there's been only one honorable person and an obvious community leader and has a bright light in the future to go, and I'm quite proud. Doss Williams verbally indicated to me yesterday that, yes, he would. When you emailed it, apparently it didn't get to me, but I was very shocked and pleased to see that some of the people are beginning to wake up. But next week, we'll give a new accounting to see if anyone else has decided to join finding a relief for signage with business and restaurant owners. Thank you very much. Have a good afternoon.
Bonnie Raisner will be followed by Dave Homos.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council. I was unable to speak during the, my name is Bonnie Raisner, I'm sorry. I was unable to speak this, and I'm going to be very brief, during the Ordinance Committee hearing, but I think I need to say it now so that next week, when the matter is taken up again, I might be able to reinforce that, the fact that I am in complete concurrence with those who are saying that enough is enough. We have three or two and a potential agreed-upon third clinic. I think that is enough, and I also just want to say that any illegal activity in the neighborhoods surrounding the sale of marijuana really has to be stopped, and I disagree that it will simply drive them underground. And if it does, that has to be stopped, and this is for the sake of the schools and the neighborhoods. Thank you very much for letting me share that.
Thank you. Just to let anybody up here know, if somebody wants to speak during public comment on something that is elsewhere on the agenda, people up here can, you can raise that point, and we could vote on not allowing that because they could have spoken then. And I know it was a very busy hearing, I understand that. I'm just telling the little rule here. And they're going to have another session, I think it's next week, right? Two weeks. Okay, there you go, in two weeks. Thank you, Bonnie. Okay, we have Bob Hanson, followed, whoops, I'm sorry, Dave Homos first, and then Bob Hanson, followed by Daniel Knapp.
Hi, guys. I was at the Ordinance Committee hearing a while ago, well, a few minutes ago, and I'm going to more or less repeat what I said last at the Ordinance Committee hearing.
Well, I don't think you heard what I just said. And that has to do with, we all heard it because we had our TVs on, or we had other people. So you might need to do something else.
Yeah, you need more beds. Foley's doing a pretty good job of what he's got, but I don't know. Maybe you ought to consider some kind of satellite shelters or something, out in the industrial district or something. I mean, that way it'd pull some of the load off of the, and send them out towards the edge of town. I mean, that was the overall plan, what, 20 years ago, was to gradually move the homeless towards the edge of town.
Thank you. Bob Hanson will be followed by Daniel Knapp. We have a parade of people who are running for council, but you're running for mayor, so.
Well, you know, Ken Lott's not here, and so I thought I'd bring some signs.
Okay.
Ken always brings the signs.
Thank you.
So the first sign says, 24 dead in Santa Barbara, homeless, and they live in the USA, and they're real people.
You need to get on the microphone, Bob. I don't know how you're going to do that, but there you go.
24 dead in Santa Barbara, and they were American citizens possibly. Why do we hate and fear each other so much? What happened Saturday in DC was like tar and feathering Obama, and that's where we're heading in this country, and it just scares the hell out of me. Santa Barbara has been giving out one-way tickets to the homeless. It's real. Please heal America. What we need is housing. Obama could sit there and open up housing all across America, and we could make some sense out of this whole thing, instead of what we're doing. So anyway, I've been thinking, I need to have like an American flag upside down and try to get Obama's attention, and an international distress signal, and say, hey, let's start opening buildings all across America. We could have parking lots and buildings, and they could be communally living in them, people could pay rent or volunteer, and we could make some sense out of this. Yesterday at the Forum, it was for hotels and restaurant people, and Channel 3 last night sat there and said, oh, yeah, it's about aggressive penthouse on State Street, and they showed homeless people in the park. It was fear mongering and hate, and, you know, I think that's what we don't want. So President Obama, you know, let's help and do some things for the homeless. One thing that Dale sat there and said in the mesa was innovative solutions, and I think that's what I'm talking about, innovative solutions. Let's have some places, and we could just start, let's say in Santa Barbara, with just 25 people, and make it work, a communal living situation. Also, another idea I had was to honor Mayor Marty Bloom for her peace and human rights activism all through the years, and have a community outreach breakfast on the first Saturday of the month from 7:00 to 9:00 out in front of City Hall here, and start talking, come up with ideas, and try to get some solutions. We don't need to hate these kids that are in gangs, or hate the homeless, and that's where we're heading, into this fear and fear mongering, hate and fear mongering. And people like to do that to get elected, but it's not beneficial for all of us. We need to start understanding each other. Thank you very much.
I never thought I would see you and I sitting at the Biltmore together having lunch. Wasn't that fun? That was good. Okay, and the last speaker will be Daniel Knapp. I know, it's amazing what happens.
Hello, Daniel Knapp, Concerned Citizen. Let's see, where do I start? Doss, I really got a bone to pick with you.
Uh-oh, we don't do that.
Apparently, Doss is a.
You can talk to Doss somewhere else.
Okay, well, just generally then, because really the basic attitude is scapegoating homeless, accusing them of crimes they haven't committed, and then the press gets a hold of it, makes us all into meth crystal users and alcohol users. I've panhandled ibusque, which is commonly referred to in Europe as a street performer, and we're getting lumped together with the rest of people who do whatever they do to make money on State Street, quasi-fair, free market. And I really, I detest a certain group of people in our community being demonized, and I think, you know, I think an apology is in order. And, you know, I really would like you to reflect on, you know, how you use words like Francine and vagrant, and a lot of other concepts that are basically, if you dig deep enough, and I sound like a Tea Party person, but they're unconstitutional. And there's a lot of unconstitutionality and just mean-spiritedness based in fear, because after all, people are, what, a paycheck away from being on State Street themselves, so they don't want to look at the problem, and the shopkeepers are so greedy, they're, they need someone to blame for their, their money woes. Maybe they ought to take a look at their landlords and ask them a few questions. Anyway, I also would like to point out that Eva Falcone in a private meeting thought that we had enough facilities for detox. When you talk program, when people are coming off drugs and alcohol, because I speak from my own experience, you better have a clinical detox. And why this community doesn't have one, I don't want to hear real estate figures and all this other malarkey.
Okay, thank you.
You should get it done.
Thank you.
Seeing that this is Drug Addiction Month, hello?
Thank you. That's all the speaker slips I have. We have several things on the Consent Calendar to read, by title only, please.
Item four, Records Destruction for Public Works Department, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara relating to the destruction of records held by the Public Works Department in the administration, facilities, maintenance, transportation, and water resources divisions. Item five, mooring regulations in the Harbor District, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara establishing rules and regulations for issuing mooring permits in the City of Santa Barbara mooring area, setting minimum specifications for installing, inspecting, and repairing such moorings, and repealing Resolution Number 06027. Item six, introduction of ordinance amending Municipal Code Title 17 regarding waterfront policies, recommending that council introduce and subsequently adopt, by reading of title only, and ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Title 17 sections ... only, and ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Title 17 sections 1720005, 1720220, and 1720265 pertaining to operations at the waterfront. And item 15, Chase Palm Park easement and adjacent recycled water easement, including recommendation B, that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara accepting a recycled water pipeline easement located on a portion of the real property commonly known as 103 South Caillay Caesar Chavez, Santa Barbara County Assessor's Parcel Number 017113020.
Okay, thank you, Susan. That's reading by title only. Without objection, we'll wait for the reading. We have a couple of things to take off of the consent calendar. We have item 10. Dr. Ackerman wants to talk to us about it, and item 11 is the one that you want to talk about. Anything else? Okay. Should we go to item 11, because you can just take care of that one quickly, and then we'll go to 10?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Staff members will come to the desk.
Okay. Let's let Susan read the title if she can, and then we'll know what we're talking about.
Item 11, approve cost sharing for the Hesoceta Fire Flood Protection and Mitigation Projects.
Madam Mayor, there was minor changes on this particular item that you have a copy of that were changes from the posted agenda, so I just wanted the staff to have an opportunity to share that with you and with the public, the minor changes.
Okay. I'm glad staff is here, because I did hold them up next to each other, and I only saw the changes in the numbers. So maybe Mr. Owazie can explain.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. John Owazie, Public Works, Principal Civil Engineer. I'd like to introduce to you Brian Demore. He's our Supervising Civil Engineer in our Streets Capital Program, and Brian does a great job in a lot of the behind-the-scenes and the number crunching and all the detail work that goes into a lot of our capital projects. I'd like to have Brian explain to you the update to the cost sharing for the Hesoceta Fire Flood Protection and Mitigation Projects.
Okay.
Thank you, John, Madam Mayor and council members. I'll give you a brief summary of the project before I get into the changes that happen, just for your benefit. So the work that is presented before you here is funded through the U.S. Department of Agriculture Natural Resources Conservation Service. We call it the NRCS. But to get to that point, we had, immediately after the Hesoceta Fire, we began working in conjunction with County Flood Control on a region-wide effort to mitigate some effects from the fire, and we created a list of projects. We had that by the end of May, a list of work that we wanted to do, and included in that list is the work that's in this council report. And the agreement with the county was that they would take the lead on the environmental, and we would take the lead on the projects that we had identified as being city lead items. So with that list, we went after available funding sources. It's a tough time right now, as everybody knows, for city funds, so ideally, looking for potential funding sources that we would only have to contribute a small share. And the NRCS has a great program where they provide up to 80%, and in this case, it was the full 80%, and then the state will kick in 75% of the remaining 20. So it works out that the city's contribution for this is only 5%. So it's a great opportunity for us to go after some of the projects that were identified. And so we have been working with the NRCS throughout the summer and also with the county on these projects. We only, in the middle of August, received the environmental clearance on this, and once that happened, we were able to work with the NRCS to finalize the damage survey reports, and then they submit that all into Washington for approval of funding. And this was all happening, and we were getting closer and closer to October, which we've had October 15th as a target to complete this work, knowing that's the start of the rain season in Santa Barbara. So it was only on September 11th that we got the final numbers from the NRCS, and that was why the dollar values changed at the very end from, I believe it was 430,000, and then it went up to 465,000. And then there was also a slight shift in terms of what projects were -- how much funding went to the different category of projects. Also, the date was finalized on September 11th. October 16th is when the NRCS is telling us this work needs to be completed. So those were the changes that happened only last week.
Okay. Thank you very much. And it looks like it's about, from our point of view, it's 23,250 that we're going to be paying.
Right, that's our 5% share.
Which is totally amazing on a -- and 73,000 total when you add in the hydromulching. So, and that's on a $5 million project, so that's totally amazing, but it's good that we could get that money from both the NRCS, which is a new acronym for me, and California, too, the state. We have, you know, Mr. Horton, go ahead.
I just had a question about the hydromulching. There were some community comments that wasn't very effective. Do you have any comments on that? I don't really know. I'm just interested in hearing what you have to say.
Yeah. Sandersen?
Yes. Madam Mayor and Councilmember Horton, I did attend the County Board of Supervisors meeting where they discussed this issue, and there was concern based on the last fire and the hydromulching effort that took place, and some debate about the effectiveness going back to that experience. It's believed that this is a useful approach to help try to mitigate the effect of the loss of vegetation going into the rainy season, but as part of this hydromulching program, the county is committed to an after-the-fact evaluation to assess the effectiveness so that we gain some experience and have some actual data that we can point to. Hopefully, we won't have to be experiencing this every year as we have in the last two years, but at least having some focused approach to really look at how effective and in what areas this is truly working to accomplish what we intend it to do. And if there's an opportunity to learn something that makes it a better approach, if we were to have to do this in the future, or other parts of the state or the country, that's the goal. So the county is committed to that, and after the application assessment will take place, driven by the county. And also, there's been a tightening of the specifications for the hydromulch material itself that the Environmental Defense Center has been part of, and so they are going to participate with the county, both in inspecting the hydromulch material before it's applied and also are invited to be part of the follow-up assessment.
Chris, just a quick follow-up. Should there be no rain, or if the rain were to be delayed a couple of months, does that have an impact on the effectiveness?
Well, I think that they're hopeful that there is not an immediate rainfall situation so that there's some stability for the material that's laid down. There's no seed in the hydromulch. It's intended to just provide some protective cover for runoff and to ultimately allow natural vegetation to come back and not be influenced by seed that would have been brought in externally. So at this point, I think we're anticipating the timing should work as best it can for our predicted type of rainfall and the timing for our winter months.
We should also note that the seed is in the hillside still, even though it's burned, and that's why we're so, always so amazed that new things grow so quickly, but the reason is because there is seed there, so we don't have to seed it. But I just wanted to make sure we thank Environmental Defense Center for helping us out. They're going to be doing, they're going to be watching the hydromulch, because last time it had a lot of stuff in it, a lot of plastic and some aluminum foil and so on, and we don't want any more of that. We just need some straight hydromulch to hold the hillside. Anybody else on this? Mr. House, go ahead.
Just very brief. Listening to you give your presentation today, it makes me think that there's enough of a backstory here in terms of our staff seeking out this kind of an opportunity and pursuing it and being diligent about it and doing it in a timely way. I mean, the timeframe here is so compressed, and to be able to accomplish this, and I'm with the mayor on this, you know, $71,000 for a $5 million project. I mean, so I don't know where, how, I'm going to take one of you guys to coffee so you can tell me about it, because I'm really interested, and it's the kind of thing that I think we should celebrate and really appreciate our staff for. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I don't think we need to vote on this separately. Anybody need to? Okay. Thank you. Then let's go on to item 10, please.
Purchase order for water treatment sludge disposal.
Okay. And that's, Mr. Ackerman, or Dr. Ackerman has a -- I thought you were going to come in here on medical marijuana, but no. I'm just kidding. I'm getting in trouble here. This is about sludge, so. Dr. Ackerman.
Madam Chairman, City Councilmembers, I am here with the hope of opening a discussion regarding the development of a new cutting-edge technology regarding wastewater treatment Instead of spending $200,000 in future years to transport wastewater treatment plant sludge to Ventura, perhaps with the help of government grants, the City of Santa Barbara can mount a capital project that would equip the city with this cutting-edge technology. The new plants burn the solids prior to processing by the plants. This eliminates the organisms that are now slipping through the present technology, which may be an unattended significant danger to the public. EPA and CDC have been hiding this information since 1982 with no discussion about it with public health or municipal decision-makers. I am handing out correspondence that details some of the finances. The methane produced by the burning of the solids can be sold and/or used to run other technology. In six to seven years, the city would break even and reap subsequent profits. You will read about a town in Connecticut with approximately the same population as Santa Barbara. This town attained the technology I am speaking about with the help of government grants. Also, the new plant in St. Paul, Minnesota will be happy to share their research costs and experience with the council if you are interested. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I went to a mayor's meeting in Washington, DC, and there were about 300, maybe 400 of us there, and EPA was talking about this issue with us, and I should get that PowerPoint for you. That was just in January of this year. They are studying the matter. They're working on it. They realize that it's an issue about microorganisms and all that sort of thing in the sledge material, so I'll try to get that information, though, because we're very aware of this sort of thing, and we're trying to do it in a smart way. So I appreciate you coming here to help us out on this one.
Well, I thought when I saw the agenda that this would be a nice opening to talk about it.
Oh, absolutely. We have a, we do capture some of the methane, and we capture the methane and put it into a fuel cell, and that helps us out with our electrical bills, but this is, you're talking about burning the sludge, and so that's a whole kind of different thing, but thank you. Thank you for coming and bringing us this information. We'll be in touch. Mr. Williams?
Well, I wanted to thank John for the reminder, and I also just wanted to say that, over the years, different individuals, especially Ido has brought to us several different kinds of technologies. Jim Smallwood also has. And I will say that staff has repeatedly taken a look at these, and so have I, even going to visit other facilities, and it's, there's just definitely a lot of information to digest, what I guess would be the pun to use. But we, and so I do think that we still are open to looking at these different methods and just haven't figured out a path yet for the ultimate solution for this.
Yeah.
Well, perhaps the two communities that I mentioned will be able to help with your digestion.
Sure.
Thank you, John.
That would be very good with our digestion. Mr. House?
Yes, and Madam Mayor, I just wanted to check in with staff. This is, we're talking conversion technology, and there's all different variations on the theme. When we see an idea like this, this kind of goes into the mix for us really to discuss and take seriously as we look forward, right? I mean, this is different from, this is different from the kind of, the one kind we've been talking about, but we've seen a variety of different ways to take and create energy out of some of these materials.
Oh, I think the reason we're all looking kind of puzzled is conversion technology with respect to our landfill.
Oh, I'm thinking, I'm using the word in another context. I apologize.
Oh, no, that's okay. That's, you can confuse us pretty easily on this.
To energy, yes. Well, anyway, please, go ahead.
But that's okay. Ms. Bjork?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, I just want to clarify. The item before you today is for the water treatment plant sludge, which is very different than the wastewater treatment plant sludge. With regard to the wastewater treatment plant sludge, we have been making sure that we continue to have dialogue during the development of the specification for the conversion technology to see whether the wastewater treatment plant sludge will be a compatible waste stream for that technology. So we are continuing to pursue that.
And you're making that distinction pretty clear between the two different kinds of product.
That's correct.
Yeah. Great. Thank you very much.
I didn't realize that.
Appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, John. We will...
I'll move the consent calendar.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Second to that.
Oh, yeah, thank you. That would help. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Poked? Thank you very much. Okay. We're on to our report from, I believe, the ordinance committee first. Yes. Mr. Williams. You had a long meeting.
Yes, we sure did. The ordinance committee had a two-hour meeting today, and we almost were done on time. We had over 40 speakers, which you can imagine is hard to put that into two hours along with two staff reports.
And two items on the agenda, too.
Right. The two items on the agenda, and of course, I accomplished that by limiting the amount of time that the committee members had to speak. So we're going to have to have an actual debate on, and work session, or, you know, basically just another hearing on the medicinal cannabis dispensary ordinance revision on the 29th. We were, however, able to conclude business on the amendments to regulations concerning the undergrounding of utilities and prescribed time limits to rebuild non-conforming properties damaged or destroyed due to natural disasters. And what that essentially is, is allowances for T-fire victims and other fires to have a little bit longer to rebuild. We actually changed the recommendation from two years to three years as a committee, and also some allowances for where it doesn't make sense to underground the utilities to, for that to be, people allowed to be granted exemptions from that.
Okay.
And it will be coming to council.
Okay. But I was interested in noting that there are 168 homes in the city that burned in the T-fire, and only 78 of those have applied, so I don't, that's less than half, and I don't, I don't want to get, have the city get a reputation for dragging our feet on those half, or lessen on those more than half that haven't applied, because it's not this, you know, when people have applied, we have 57 of them have final approvals, and 42 of them already have building permits, so that's pretty darn good in 10 months. So I just wanted to make sure that we noted that. We're keeping track of them, and we're trying to make sure that, I think we're bending over backwards, so I want to make sure that we keep track of them more and make sure that everybody gets their fair hearing and that they go to the front of the line and all that sort of thing, so that's good.
And I just hope people, members of the public, will not be intimidated by the process. There's a, I have a list of people who would love to help guide you through the process.
Sure.
So I hope people will plunge into that, and if they need some help finding those, talk to their friendly neighborhood council members.
Well, those things, it's very difficult, though. I know. I'm just trying to remodel one bathroom, and I'm totally getting flustered about it, but that's just, it's just because it is difficult. Mr. Horton, did you have something? Oh, Finance Committee. Of course you did. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Finance Committee met today at 1:00 PM, and our topic today was funding allocation of the city's community promotion grants with the Santa Barbara County Arts Commission. We listened to a presentation on that by Ms. Brush and recommended those on to a subsequent meeting of council. It was necessary for me as chair to recuse from two of the items because of my position on boards. Thank you.
Okay. And, yeah, well, it'll come to us, and I've forgotten when.
Maybe next week.
Okay, that's what I thought. Yeah, thank you. Okay. Item number 19, please.
Upper State Street area design guidelines, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara to adopt updated design guidelines for the Upper State Street area. design guidelines for the Upper State Street area.
Okay. Ms. Wees, and then Ms. Baker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make just a few brief introductory remarks before turning it over to Heather Baker. This item before you today is an update of the Upper State Street design guidelines. We're saying update because in 1992, there were a set of guidelines adopted. They were... They are fairly simple, not very detailed, but they have helped the ABR, staff in the Planning Commission, and applicants consider projects in different parts of the Upper State Street area in the past. The reason for the update is with the completion of the Upper State Street study in May of 2007, the council adopted a resolution that directed that new guidelines, based on very important findings we had in the Upper State Street study, be developed. The concept for the guidelines as an outcome of the study was to really do a top-notch effort, something embark on form-based design approaches. And for a time, we really were excited in looking into that. But the time came to budget constraints, and we were concerned that we would not be able to move forward with that project at all when, at a Finance Committee meeting, a compromise suggestion was made to take the existing council resolution from the study in 2007 and adapt them into a guideline format. There's quite a bit of policy direction on many areas of concern in the Upper State Street area, transportation-related, environmental sustainability concerns, and design. And so, staff was directed to take a simplified guideline approach. And I want to acknowledge Heather for her effort in this. We said that it would be a simplified approach, but this has not actually been simple. It's... It has taken time to look at that language that was crafted as general goal and policy direction and give it meaning now that the boards and commissions and staff and applicants can use as guidelines. And what we have found in the drafting of these guidelines is we have limited staff resources to do that, so that this is not an extensive process. But we did involve the Planning Commission and the ABR, and through those reviews and comments from the public, we have amended the guidelines a number of times. And we are now presenting to you a proposed draft for approval. I do want to note that we have had input along the way and that there are people raising concerns that feel that the guidelines should be something different or entail something different. As a staff, I feel that we've done the best we can with the direction that we were given to work on the 2007 resolution and do a simplified approach. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Heather. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Baker.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the council. So, thanks, Betty, for that introduction. And so, to summarize, the purpose of the guidelines is to provide additional direction for how property owners, both public and private, can make improvements to their properties to collectively improve the visual character and circulation of the Upper State Street area. So, again, the focus here as design guidelines is on design versus some of the other land use issues that were explored in the Upper State Street study. The guideline content sources come from three major areas. Again, the Upper State Street study from 2007 and the final council resolution are the major base for the guidelines, as well as incorporating the existing material in the 1992 guidelines. And then also, of course, the input that we received, which Betty described. And we also had a subcommittee of the ABR and PC that were very helpful in suggesting additional texts and photos and revisions. And then we also had a few passages, just a few key passages, from the city's urban design guidelines, which were relevant, which were added in. So, there's a... There's a number of changes, which... And updates. And the attachments, one and two, go into quite a bit of detail about the different various improvements that were made to the guidelines and changes that were made along the way over the last six months. However, I'm just going to give you eight different highlights on some various topics for this afternoon. So, the first would be area character and openness was a big focus for the update. We added a new chapter called site planning, building setbacks, and parking with photographs and guidelines regarding that. One particular area that received attention, especially from the subcommittee, was regarding building heights and setback dimensions and when it might be appropriate to have front setback modifications. The subcommittee felt it was very important to more carefully and explicitly define this to make it easier to know when that might be a possibility and to define when it might be appropriate. Also, landscaping and streetscape design received some attention. Parking lots and making sure that there's adequate screening was a focus. One ABR member also felt it was important to address the berms in front of buildings, and so we have a new guideline regarding that so that they'll be avoided in the future. Site layouts, which can improve the area's circulation and parking, was also a focus. This is an example, that photo there, of one parking lot which actually connects with another parking lot, which is a big issue in the Upper State Street area, the parking lot barriers. And so, where feasible, we're suggesting that those can be removed as part of development proposals as possible. We also provided three different photograph examples of rear parking lots, so you'll see what it looks like from the street or an entrance, or how the layout is from the back with some of those examples that are in the guidelines. Scenic views was also a topic. As we know, three-story buildings can affect scenic views, and so some appropriate ways to address potential effects of three-story buildings are outlined in Guideline 24. Additionally, we also explored the concept of that on the south side of the street, you need to provide viewing opportunities, not just protecting views on the north side, but that you also need to have places where the public can enjoy those views that were preserved. For open space in creeks, we had a new review of the text that was proposed by the creeks division and had some improvements there. We also provided a photograph example of a pedestrian pathway downtown that's effective near creek areas, because there's very specific preferences now regarding how that occurs. And we also included things like that for pedestrian improvements as well. Betty did mention that we received some public comment letters. One of those from the Citizens Planning Association did request some additional language regarding the health benefits of landscaped open areas. Staff is amenable to including that additional language if the council prefers. And so, that's that topic. And then last, for pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, transit, and connectivity in the area, you will find the near-term improvements map in these guidelines. However, the guidelines refer the readers to the Upper State Street study, because we kept the bulk of the transportation information there. We felt as design guidelines, we didn't need to go into great detail regarding transportation. However, opportunities where there's public-private partnership opportunities for developments are referenced in Guideline 67. So, the long-term transportation improvements aren't gone into at all in these guidelines. Instead, those remain in the Upper State Street study. And your council resolution reflects that division of where those things are located. I'd like to give special thanks to a number of people who helped with the update of these guidelines. First, I'd like to, of course, acknowledge the Upper State Street study staff, since that is where the bulk of the guideline content comes from. Rob Dayton, Barbara Shelton, V. Galarte, John Ledbetter, Adam Naris, and Allison Grubie. And then our Upper State Street Subcommittee, the Planning Commission members who participated, Sheila Lodge, Charmaine Jacobs, Bruce Bartlett. And from the ABR, Keith Rivera, Clay Orell, and Carol Gross. And then additional staff who contributed to the guidelines in this particular update, Jaime Lemon, Steve Foley, Scott Vincent, Deana McMillan, and Gabriela Feliciano. So, in conclusion, we feel that these updated guidelines are a useful tool for analyzing the appropriateness of private development projects which could be proposed, and we recommend that the council adopt the guidelines today.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have three speakers. Are there any questions from the council before we go to the speakers? Mr. Horton.
Just a question on the transportation improvements from my days on the TNC Committee. I'm really interested in this. On the map which you gave us, the red dot stands for relocated bus stops. We're on the same page here. Does that mean a... Simply a movement of the placement of the stop, or does it imply an inset so that the MTD bus would be out of the traffic lane? Can you help me with that?
I know that... I think Rob Dayton may be able to provide an additional response. But these recommendations, the red dots, were looked at in the Upper State Street traffic study, and in some instances, it's simply moving it like... I'm particularly aware of the one in front of the Century 21 building, where it's a stop and a bench, and it was just going to be moved to the other side of the driveway of the adjacent 7-Eleven. In other instances, there may be, again, a need to coordinate with the driveway, a relocation... These are relocations, so they aren't new. But it's, I think, trying to improve the location relative to driveways and not necessarily creating bus pockets or turnouts. So, it's a simple relocation, is my understanding. Okay. That's what the study recommended in these locations.
That's all we need. Good. Thank you. Okay. We might as well go to the speakers, and then we can come back to the councils. Is that okay? Paul Hernadi, followed by Connie Hanna and Kathy McCammon will be the last speaker.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers. It's a very good afternoon indeed, because it's not terribly hot or anything like that. I would like to state for the record that I am Paul Hernadi, speaking today for the South County Land Use Committee of the Citizens Planning Association. We also submitted a letter to you yesterday, which probably you read, so I will try to be as concise as I can be. We welcome... Our committee welcomes several recent changes in the draft Upper State Street area design guidelines. In particular, we appreciate that the September 2009 revision reflects some of our comments on the June 2009 and August 2009 versions. We believe, however, that these major planning documents could greatly benefit from more attention to certain details ranging from substantive to grammatical and typographic. We also believe that the public's perusal and council's consideration of the latest 52-page version should not have been limited to four full days of the document's availability, including Saturday and Sunday. We request, therefore, that council decline to adopt by reading of title only the proposed resolution adopting Upper State Street area design guidelines, and that the public be given adequate opportunity to provide input into full council deliberation at a future meeting. This request has also been endorsed by the Allied Neighborhood Association. In the letter submitted yesterday, we highlighted four areas where we felt the documents should be further improved before it is adopted by city council. In the interest of time, I will only mention two of the four this afternoon. First, the legislative intent of the SD-2 building height and front setback requirements was, and I quote, "to prevent the volumes of traffic on State Street from exceeding acceptable limits and to limit increased air pollution due to vehicular traffic." It's important to realize that the increased financial feasibility of large-scale underground parking was not envisioned by the framers of the SD-2 ordinance. Indeed, the newly introduced Guideline Number 32 points in the right direction when it suggests, and I quote, "projects with underground parking should explore opportunities to create additional open space on the ground level." But we urge the adoption of a more explicit design requirement to the effect that a considerable segment of any project's building area, which is no longer needed for surface parking, shall be used as landscaped open space. In the absence of such a requirement, the intent of the SD-2 ordinance could be easily thwarted by dense overdevelopment, leading precisely to increased traffic and air pollution. And secondly, and lastly today, air pollution is an especially serious urban design concern if we want to increase the number of people walking, biking, and residing along Upper State Street. This transit corridor features congested midday and PM speaker traffic in four travel lanes and up to three additional turning lanes. The potential health gains due to working, shopping, and living in walkable urban centers must not be compromised by greatly increased risks to the respiratory system of sensitive receptors, including children. The September 2009 guidelines deserve praise for conveying several health-related insights about landscaping, creeks, setbacks, and other open spaces. It would be desirable to distill the widely scattered pertinent remarks into a specific guideline promoting urban design characteristics that aim to lessen the health impacts of air pollution in the Upper State Street area. I was very pleased to hear Heather mentioning that some suggested language to this effect might be... Might be acceptable to staff and hopefully also to council. In a hurry, I jotted down a possible addition to... This was transpired yesterday. Jotted down a possible addition to Guideline 30, which would read after two other recommendations The sentence reads, "Bear in mind the beneficial health impact of landscaped open spaces on air quality in the congested Upper State Street area." This would bring some very good remarks in the current guidelines in the form of discussion and some looser language into the framework of the guidelines. So, if that can be added, that would certainly be very good. But our basic request is to, in general, allow more time for a more thorough examination of a document which should triumphantly conclude two and a half years of work. And a lot of people did very serious thinking, and staff did a great deal of writing, that I think we should allow another two weeks or so for making the document perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Connie Hanna will be followed by the last speaker. Kathy McCammon, would you like to come up? Kathy, get ready. Hi.
Hi. I'm Connie Hanna, speaking for the Santa Barbara League of Women Voters. Since 2006, league members have been very involved in the Upper State Street study and the guidelines. We now have a new design guidelines document that correctly describes the goals of the SD-2 zone and how they have helped the area, but then undercuts those requirements with many modifications. The league has supported retaining all of the SD-2 requirements from the beginning. We don't want to see these policies change. For example, on page 2.2, we do not think that the setback requirement should ever be modified in the west suburb area. There are east suburb areas correctly defined where there have never been any setbacks, and maintaining compatibility there makes sense. But wherever there have been really adequate setbacks, the streetscape is so much improved that the SD-2 setbacks should continue to be required. On the north side of the street, we still think that a two-story limit should be required to protect the mountain views. On pages 38 and 313, it sounds as if the city is actually recommending three-story buildings rather than following the SD-2 recommendation that three stories only be built if there are very serious problems on the site. We note that there have been positive responses to our earlier comments, and we thank you for that. However, we find that other sections now contain the same modifications that undermine the SD-2. We don't think that one weekend is long enough for league members, the public, or even the council to consider all the ramifications of changing these policies. We would like to have this final draft go to the Planning Commission once more for reconsideration. We would like to have this final draft go to the Planning Commission once more for reconsideration. The modifications of the SD2 zone that are recommended in this document are so serious that it ought not to be adopted as it is today. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last speaker will be Connie, I'm Kathy McCammon.
Yes, I'm Kathy McCammon, and I'm here today in part to echo the requests of the two previous speakers. It was quite a shock to read the staff recommendation on this, that it be adopted by reading of title only, because just to go back, it was at the Planning Commission, I think there was quite a bit of feeling that the document at that point was not ready for primetime, and it was very hard to read. And so then the subcommittee was set up to have three planning commissioners and three people from ABR. Well, it then went back to ABR, and the natural expectation would be that it would then go back to the Planning Commission, and people could have a chance to say something. Well, here suddenly, it is here before you for adoption without having had the opportunity of public comments to the more readable document, and it just seems like something got left out here for the public to have both the chance to read it, to understand it, and perhaps clarify with staff if there were some questions or confusions, and then to have a chance for us to express our concerns to you. Just to give you kind of an example of the type of thing I'm talking about in terms of confusions on page 3-8, it says, "In the SD2 zone, allowing a third story is related to the size of a two-story building as described above." Fine. And when the standard was written, it did not include, it did not count for projects with underground parking and assumed that the size of development would be more limited because of a side area taken up by parking and setbacks. As such, on sites where underground parking is proposed, a three-story building could in fact be more feasible, not less feasible. Well, a bigger space with underground parking, that doesn't change the fact that you can only go up three stories in the same amount of square footage as you could in a two-story. So what is it about having underground parking that suddenly makes the three-story building more feasible? I mean, it just seems a bit puzzling and confusing. Then on the underground parking, it, on page 3-10, it talks about underground parking and open space opportunities, and this is, you know, a really good idea, we're certainly supportive of this, but exactly how is this going to be done? More opportunities for greater underground-level open space can be created with projects featuring underground parking structures. Fine. But how is that to tell anybody, whether it be an applicant, public, or decision-makers, how much more open space? So I think there are just some little fine-tuning things that need to happen here, and it would be wonderful to have the opportunity to be able to comment on them. So I hope that you would give us another two weeks to review this and submit our comments. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have any more speakers, Elizabeth. Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Baker, did the, did the Planning Commission expressly say they didn't want to see this again?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Francisco, no, the Planning Commission did not say that. However, we did have a public hearing just a month ago with the Architectural Board of Review, and so there was an opportunity to comment on pretty much the most recent version of the guidelines. They've changed very little since August.
Uh-huh. It's my understanding, I might add, that when we were at the Planning Commission, and the idea for the subcommittee came up, and we said that we would do that, that the commission understood that would be the process, and we mentioned having ABR be the lead in recommending the design guidelines to the council, which is the typical process. Planning Commission involvement here is very important. They were leaders in the Upper State Street Study and really want to see as much of that study implemented, so certainly their inclusion in the process is important. But although they did not expressly say that, I don't believe it was anticipated, because typically, design guidelines would come to the council with a recommendation from the ABR.
Right. And if, if, if these were purely design guidelines, if we were just talking about buildings, I would expect the ABR to have the final say in this, but you had a subcommittee of both Planning Commissioner, Planning Commission members and ABR members, and if you look at the things that Ms. Baker outlined as being the, the significant focuses of this study, I would say the majority of them, area character and openness, site layout to improve circulation and parking, scenic views, open space and creeks, transportation improvements, all of those, as far as I can tell, fall under the purview of the Planning Commission. In fact, some of these are ones that staff specifically tells ABR to stay out of. So I feel that the request from the public for a decent interval of review for members of the public, as well as a hearing before the Planning Commission on area guidelines before it comes to city council, that seems perfectly reasonable to me.
Mr. House.
A couple of questions. When we use the word guidelines, like we're doing here, what level of specificity or detail are we typically expecting? I mean, are we giving parameters, specific parameters and, and measurements and that kind of thing? Are we giving a sense of things and where things are going in general? I mean, how far down in detail do we expect from guidelines like this? And maybe distinguishing them from, say, the, our implementing ordinances and things that we rely on for the, the harder edges?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember House, certainly there's a distinction between ordinance requirements that are often very precise and numerical and measurable and guidelines. For the Upper State Street Study and its recommendations, I, again, this is, I think at some point it was anticipated that the guidelines that would be developed for that area might be very specific in certain respects if we had taken the form-based approach, where we could have looked at each block face, the corners, and a variety of things. This guideline document is more general, which is typical for a guideline document, and as Ms. Baker explained, it was really based on the existing guidelines, existing design guidelines for Upper State, a little bit from the urban design guidelines, but mostly it's the language that the council approved in 2007. So that's where we, we tried actually to limit new information. It's a restating of your policy direction in the form of guidelines so that it can be implemented better. If we said to the Architectural Board of Review or an applicant, "Review Council Resolution blank, blank, 2007," it just, it wouldn't have had the same effect, but this is essentially that, in language with a few photos that we think will help people understand better the council's direction.
Good, and it is helpful. I mean, as I read it, I can get the flavor of the area from it, and I really do appreciate that. It was, I think it's, I certainly think it's on the right track. ABR would have the, the biggest part of this, like the color palette and those kinds of things, and Planning Commission has weighed in on the, on the use kind of things like Mr. Francisco's talked about. Who were the, who were the stakeholders, and what was the range of those who participated in this? Were there a number of different organizations that have contributed to this, or has it been just very few, or how's that gone?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember House, our primary commenters have been the same commenters who are here today from the Citizens Planning Association and the League of Women Voters. However, the Upper State Street Study in 2007, I'm sure, had additional commenters as well, and Betty could fill you in on that process more, because I wasn't involved at that point. It was John Ledbetter's long-range planning team.
I see, because that formed the foundation for what we have here, and then this is the refining of it, and getting it into the sort of a public-friendly kind of arrangement.
Yeah, guideline numbers that staff can use in analysis of reports, et cetera.
Okay. I just, I'll just comment real quickly. When we get this far along in something like this, I tend to not want to go nitpick it and get into, like, try to make every tiny perfect thing. And the reason is, is that I really do like that it's general in nature, and it leaves the, it really gives the kind of guidance that we were hoping for in the first place. I respect the comments that I'm hearing here, but I, I'm concerned about now taking it, and I mean, we could, we could take this and go forever on it until we get it exactly 100% perfect, and I kind of like it, that it's just a little rough on the edges, and it leaves us with the direction of it, and then nobody's going to be holding everyone to every single word of it. No, that's what the, that's what the other kind of language is all about. And so I'm, I'm, I feel really comfortable with this. I like the direction it's going. So I'd be happy to support this today.
Okay. And I just wanted to assure everybody that typos and that sort of thing, somebody mentioned it can be corrected, and I, I hope that if you see anything, I'm reading somebody's book who isn't published yet, and I'm circling typos. I got my little red pen, it's sort of fun, but, so if anybody sees any typos or anything like that, just let us know, and we'll try to correct that. That's, that's simple. I did want to say that it seems to me, in talking about third story, but I was pleased, I read through the whole thing, I was pleased to see that it was just, it kind of, it put it all together, and that we've already been talking about up here, and the idea that the transportation, I like the idea that the transportation element is in the Upper State Street Study. That's where you're going to read it, and maybe, and I think there's a reference from here to there. So that, I think that's very important, because we spend a long time on these things. I just think it's, it's really good, and the, the three-story buildings, I was especially cognizant of, I like where it says in the guideline, it's on page 38, it says, "Three-story buildings, a typically acceptable building size, mass, bulk, and scale and height in the Upper State Street area is a two-story development." And that couldn't be any plainer. And then it says, "When they're proposed to be over two stories, here are some things we've got to consider." And I just, I think that's very wonderful. I wish we had that for the downtown area, and I know that's going to be a different discussion on November, whatever, but, you know, but it's, this is a very good look at it all, and frankly, the, I think all of the, all of our design boards do talk about creeks. When, when there's a house, single-family design board talks about creeks, right next to the creek. So does, so does the ABR, and I've, you know, this is my 20th year on here, starting with the design board, and I have never seen us not talk about creeks. It's not just in a planning commission, and I know you didn't really mean that, but I don't think, I just think that, that all of those things, mountain views also, paseos, which are included in here, all of those things are in all of our design review boards. I guess the question for us is, do we want to send it back to the Planning Commission? So we'll see. Mr. Williams first, and then Mr.?
Well, I always generally agree with your comments, Madam Mayor. I think that the, the, that we should not let the perfect be the enemy of the good, and, and we have done a decent amount of work, both as staff and both our advisory boards and council, on this. I, I think we've been very clear that, that three-story buildings are not the sort of generally desirable thing, particularly on the north side of the, of State Street, but that where, where it is proposed, that there needs to be view opportunities or easements, usable open space, creek buffers, pedestrian amenities, improved circulation and connectivity. I think that's, again, something that would be preferable to, to have, you know, sort of additional requirements and benefits for heights everywhere. So I think that's, again, a, a good thing. I, I'm not necessarily violently opposed to giving it two more weeks, but I also don't think that sending it back to Planning Commission will just take two more weeks. If we send it back to Planning Commission, I think that it'll take considerably longer.
Ms. Schneider hasn't spoken yet, and then Mr. Francisco again.
Thank you. So thank you to people who have commented today and for a number of years. I, I really appreciate the, the maps in here and trying to, I think it was mentioned before, put some visual examples of things that it was in a resolution form, which is sometimes hard to understand in resolution form, and get a good contextual look at, at a lot of the examples here. You mentioned that it's been a month since the ABR meeting, when the subcommittee presented everything in a public hearing then, and then there's just some tweaks from there that, that what we're, what we're looking at today is some tweaks from a month ago? Is that correct?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Schneider. So, right, the bulk of the subcommittee's work was presented at the ABR, the new version. We went through about three versions this summer, and so the public did have ample opportunity to review that prior to that hearing. One of the major changes since then, or the only major change that I would consider was just that through council review, we did have a closer look at the three-story building guideline.
Okay. And, and I reread that section too, because I know that was a big issue about two or three stories basically being on the south or north side of, of State Street, and it's pretty clear saying an appropriate building height in that side would be two stories, and only if you could do all these XYZ ABCs would we even consider something else in the future, which, that's what these guidelines are for, because you don't know what kind of project's going to come, what's going to come up, and, and so you have this as a basis to start from, and then you figure out the details based on the application that's before you. So I appreciate that, and also the connectivity pieces of it too, which I know that was a big, big topic of conversation when we did those walks and, and the tours and, you know, by McKenzie Park and along the creeks, and so the, the maps there too is very important. Plus, it, it gives some opportunities for the future in terms of, you know, trying to be as flexible as you can with other transportation options, because we know this has come to us many times related to that, and due to budget constraints and some other things of wanting to keep things moving and keep our general plan moving on a regular schedule as much as we can, that, you know, this is, I think, the best option that we had in terms of closing the door, not closing the door, but, you know, finalizing a document after so many weeks of, of hearings and tours and, and public hearings and testimony. So I, you know, I, I'd have to agree with Councilmember Williams, to not let the perfect get in the way of the good, if there's, these can always be looked at again. I'm sure they will be as part of the general plan update as that moves forward. I think it's time to, you know, approve these now and, you know, keep track of some of the other concerns as they come up, is, again, through the bigger general plan update, and, again, that can always be looked at, and especially if and when other projects come up in the Upper State Street, we can, you know, then look in detail of, on these guidelines. So I'm happy with moving forward with this today. You mentioned there was some language from CPA that you'd be happy to include in this document, and I'm certainly, I saw Naomi Kovak's letter, and that seemed fine with me as well, so I guess we could, I don't know if you wanted to mention that in a little more detail, or what, where that would fit in here?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Schneider, Mr. Hernadi actually read it during his public comment. It was an amendment to guideline 30 regarding the health benefits of landscaped open space.
Yeah, and that's certainly an important piece, and I'm very happy to include that in here as well. So those are my comments, and thank you for your work on this.
Okay. Mr. Francisco, and then Mr. Horton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not expecting a perfect document out of this, and I think the work that has been done on it is, is good work. I also don't see the urgency in adopting this today, and I think the point that members of the public have made, that this was only released four days ago, and I know that staff has been working intimately with this document for months, and so you may feel that the changes are trivial, but I feel that when we release this sort of document, that the public needs adequate time to comment. And I really don't understand what the rush is, and we've been at this for two and a half years, I don't understand what the rush is to get this approved today. Now, it sounds like the majority of people on council disagree with me, fine, but I would see, I, I don't see a problem with letting this go back to the Planning Commission, allowing the public time to review the final draft of these guidelines, and that, that just seems straightforward to me. So that's, that's how I see it.
Mr. Horton.
I pretty well like the document. I studied Section 4 Transportation and found it to be inclusive of the things that I was concerned about. In particular, I liked 4-4 and 4-5. I think the public-private partnership improvement projects is a, is an idea that definitely we could work on in the, in the upcoming months and years. So I think it's a, it's a good effort, and I would be happy to support moving it forward.
Mr. House.
Yes, I'd like to move then that we adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara to adopt updated design guidelines for the Upper State Street area, including the revised language to guideline number 30 that we discussed.
Upper State Street area, including the revised language to Guideline Number 30 that we discussed just a moment ago, and with our appreciation for all who have participated.
Okay. And I'll second it. Any more discussion at all? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 No.
Okay. Okay, item, thank you very much. Thanks for your work, Ms. Baker. Item Number 20.
Request from Councilmembers Schneider and Williams regarding a letter opposing new federal offshore oil drilling.
Okay. Ms. Schneider and Mr. Williams, I think we have some speakers on this one, but go ahead. Williams.
Madam Mayor, this January, the draft, the draft plan for a proposed Outer Continental Shelf Oil and Gas Leasing Program for the next five years was released by the Department of Interior. That, again, that was at a hearing in San Francisco in January. I attended that hearing. I did not represent myself as speaking for all of you, but I did speak there. And I think that it is important, now that we have a new administration in particular, for them to let the new Department of Interior, the new folks at MMS, know what our longstanding position has been in the city of Santa Barbara against new federal leasing. There are two areas, there are four areas proposed for new federal leasing, and two of them are in our county. One is the Santa Barbara Channel and the other is the Santa Maria Basin. And I think it just is appropriate, and for you as the mayor of Santa Barbara, to author a letter reiterating our past opposition to new federal leasing of oil.
Yeah. And actually, this is on our legislative platform that we adopt each, I think, January. And so I could have sent this anyway.
Right.
But I know you wanted to make sure that everybody knew about it, and that's fine.
And I think that was also something I should probably let you know, that there has been a request, just as there was to the county, from interested environmental groups, including the Environmental Defense Center, that we actually hold a hearing.
Oh.
Because particularly last year, or the previous year, when the county, I forget which, was 2008 or 2007, when the county reversed its longtime position temporarily on oil, that it created a lot of confusion throughout the entire country about that, about where we, where our constituents were on this. And I think it's very clear that the majority of our constituents are opposed to new federal oil leasing, and I think we should reiterate our opposition to it.
Well, and I think we need to clarify the, I believe it was EDC that took the lead in this Tranquillian Ridge project. And, but that's in an existing lease, as I understand it. And the agreement was that if we allow that in that existing lease, then they will take out four of the oil rigs, I think it was four. And anyway, it's a planned cessation of the oil drilling, which I think is a good idea. Knowing that this oil out here is not the kind of thing that you're ever going to see in your pump. And secondly, it's the kind of thing that's exported. If, you know, a certain percentage of it is exported to other countries, which I think is amazing that we're talking about drilling in our country to get oil to us so we don't depend on foreign oil. And we're taking oil out of the Santa Barbara Channel to send over to, I think it's Korea and Japan, maybe? I've forgotten, but somewhere in the Far East. It just doesn't make any sense. So, anyway, those are my little details here. And Ms. Schneider, did you want to say something?
Thank you, just as the other council member to put this on. I appreciate that you were ready to sign your name based on the legislative platform. I just want to reiterate that it was 2008. It was during the height of a very national politicized election going on there, that it created a lot of confusion when you had the Wall Street Journal, the New York Times, NBC Nightly News, all talking, CBS, that's right, talking about what's happening in Santa Barbara. So I thought it was important for that reason, and then also because there's just been so much in the discussion of the media about what's happening with different oil-type-related developments and taking positions on it, that having a hearing would be appropriate just to do that. And I think there's also a distinction, since you brought up Tranquillian Ridge, that the difference between the proposal going through the State Lands Commission, in my opinion, is that's a process that needs to be upheld and not circled around. And I think there's some legislative attempts to try to do that, which regardless of how you, what you believe about the proposal, skirting around the actual process going through the State Lands Commission is very dangerous, I think, and sets a precedent. So that's an issue here. But that's not what we're talking about here, which is why it was good to bring it up, because there's so many different things related to oil in the Santa Barbara Channel, just to try to clarify all the different aspects of it. So I appreciate hearing from the public what they have to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have several members of the public that would like to speak, so let's get started on this. Dr. Heller, Dr. Lee Heller, followed by Jim Childress.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I am here today as a member of the Board of Directors of Get Oil Out, also known as GU. As most of you know, GU was formed in the immediate aftermath of the devastating 1969 oil spill in the Santa Barbara Channel, a spill which helped our community and the nation as a whole to begin to understand the serious environmental risks associated with offshore drilling. GU would like to express strong support of Councilmembers Schneider and Williams' proposal that the city send a letter opposing the Department of the Interior's draft five-year leasing program. Santa Barbara absolutely must weigh in on this matter. Because of the 1969 spill, we are both the physical and symbolic heart of the debate over offshore drilling. The city's position on this issue carries real weight, as was evident last year when the media picked up on the Board of Supervisors' brief support of new leases since reversed. Now that the DOI is moving forward with an actual plan, the city needs to reassert its strong opposition to new leases in federal waters and its support of a continuation of the moratorium that has done so much to protect our precious coastline. The proposed letter is absolutely in keeping with the city's previous recent resolution on this issue. Your vote today will reassert that position and communicate to the powers that be that where Santa Barbara is concerned, we need to do everything we can to prevent a repetition of the nightmare of 1969. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, oh, a question right here. Mr. Francisco has a question for you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Heller. Your organization is one of the supporters of the Tranquillian Ridge Project.
Yes.
And I'm just trying to, just trying to get some terminological distinctions here. So in the Tranquillian, the proposed project at Tranquillian Ridge, the drilling platform, Platform Irene, is in federal waters.
Yes.
The target of that drilling, Tranquillian Ridge, is in state waters.
Correct.
So would you consider that to be new drilling in federal waters or state waters?
State waters. So this is a distinct and separate issue.
Okay. So from your point of view, drilling in state waters is not under discussion today. We're only talking about federal waters.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Jim Childress will be followed by Connie Hanna.
Mayor Bloom, council members. I'm Jim Childress, Chair of the Santa Barbara Group and Sierra Club, and representing the Los Padres Chapter of the Sierra Club as well. We've long opposed offshore oil. I don't think there's a lot to say. We're fully supportive of the letter that Councilmembers Williams and Schneider put forward. And we'll be with that.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience in wading through all of us, all of what we did today. Connie Hanna with the League of Women Voters, followed by Bruce Allen.
I've been asked to read the statement prepared by Jean Holmes, who is the chairman of the Energy Committee of the Santa Barbara League of Women Voters. And I was asked, because I'm already here, which makes sense.
Good idea.
I'm Connie Hanna. The League of Women Voters endorses the draft letter under consideration today. We think it's appropriate to continue the city's long opposition to oil production in the Santa Barbara Channel. I might note that the League has been with you all the way. Our action position on this concern dates back to the 1950s. We are all aware that in spite of improvements in technology and regulations, offshore oil and gas is still an industry that presents risks to the marine environment and is a significant source of air pollutants. The slant drilling that some are proposing for new leases most likely could not be accommodated from the old platforms already present. Large new platforms would have to be added to our viewscape, and infrastructure to support them would have to be built on shore. This would obviously not be in keeping with the character of Santa Barbara as expressed in its charter. Sustainability is in keeping with the character of this city, and we note that you are already promoting conservation and the use of alternative sources of energy as the official policy in Santa Barbara. The League recommends approval of the letter opposing inclusion of the Santa Barbara Channel in the next federal offshore oil and gas leasing program. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Allen will be followed by Lad Handelman.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm Bruce Allen, co-founder of SOS California. We oppose the letter that's proposed, but if it is going to be sent, we would recommend that start with a sentence that basically speaks to the very large environmental benefits that offshore oil and gas production has had for our coastline. And let's study that comment. That's indisputable in actual fact. It's very clear that over the last 50 years, our beaches are far cleaner now and have less oil and tar pollution on them than they ever had in the last 400,000 years. That's how long these seeps have existed. So all into the future, we will have cleaner beaches from existing oil production. We can actually have far cleaner beaches if that production is expanded. Our air and water is cleaner. That's not really in dispute. So let's have a hearing, if that is a question, on this fact, and let's clarify this for the public, because it is a very significant environmental issue. And I would also like to note at the April 16 federal hearings, which I was asked to speak at from the Minerals and Management Service and Department of Interior, after I spoke, I was rather surprised that senior staff and the scientific staff of the MMS came up to me, congratulated me on my testimony, and said what I was saying was entirely accurate and that I should actually try to make an effort for the public to better understand this issue, some of the same staff that funded the UCSB studies. So it's very clear ironically that on, in part, I'm here at the behest of the Minerals and Management Service to clarify for the public what we're saying is actually true. And we think that's an important truth, that offshore oil production has actually led to cleaner water and beaches. The 69 spill was a short-term effect. There is no question that the long-term benefits of reductions of oil seeps is far greater long-term benefit to the coastal residents and future residents of Santa Barbara County than any spill ever will be. So I would ask that you do have hearings on this issue, since it is an important issue to local residents, and I think we could clarify this based upon studies over the last several decades that have brought this to light, and we think that's very important. And on a final note, the PXP project that's talked about to remove the federal platforms that was supported by the EDC, GU, and others, there was never going to be those platforms being removed according to the testimony of the Western Director of the MMS. There was never any contemplation that those platforms would be removed, just to clarify that point. Thank you.
Bruce, I've been through a lot of hearings with MMS in the 70s, 80s mostly, and I heard them say all kinds of stuff. And I just want you to know, I mean, you know, as much as I love bureaucracy, which I don't, but you know, I understand that bureaucracy has to happen, and I understand MMS has to be there, but I heard a gentleman from MMS say that there's absolutely no air pollution that comes off of those rigs out there, and that's totally untrue. And now we all know that. So, and I'm not saying a lot of it or anything like that, I'm just saying, he said zero. And so the things that sometimes come out of people's mouths and I, you know, I respect the fact of, you and I have talked a lot on this, and I respect your theory on this, but if you're saying you're speaking for MMS, you might be stepping into something that you don't really want to be.
What I will, now, this is on public record at the State Lands Commission, which there is at, so I can say this with some confidence, I did hear this. The Director said the MMS never was given a copy of that agreement, never sought, that is what they said in open testimony to the State Lands Commission.
I understand. I'm certainly not jumping into that in any way.
Yeah.
But I'm just telling you, okay, I'll leave it there.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lad Handelman will be followed by Rudy Mang, oh, boy, I probably mangled that name. Yeah, there's a, one right there, so we can see you and hear you and everything else. He just did a little parallel park thing there. That was good.
Actually, I turned mine in first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to speak first?
Yes, please.
Okay. There you go. Sorry. I don't know how that happened, but go ahead.
Madam Mayor and council members, I'm Rudy Mang, a city resident. The statement was, the statement was printed Sunday, September the 6th, on the Ed Hat Online News Journal. Our community is in financial crisis. Huge amounts of new revenue are available to address that crisis from new offshore production. Santa Barbara's most respected economic analyst, Dr. Mark Schnipe, states that $300 million per year can be generated from offshore production. Dr. Schnipe's work goes unchallenged. Yet several of you oppose all-new development. You choose to ignore this opportunity even though you know that increasing budget shortfalls will wreak havoc on those most in need. I find this unconscionable. You attempt to justify your position using the same anti-oil slogan as has been used for 40 years. Santa Barbara cannot afford another 1969 spill. Drilling is too dangerous. And yet in January, just seven months ago, you enthusiastically join your group of anti-oil friends to convince the Lieutenant Governor to allow a new drilling project. You proclaim that because after 14 years, the platform would be removed, and because it was the right deal, it was a good project. You said that because the slant drilling method would be used, there was no threat to the environment. You can't have it both ways. If you truly believe that the act of drilling is so dangerous, how could you have wanted any drilling at all, even for a single day, let alone 14 years? You contended that you supported this project because the right deal had been struck. It makes no sense. I submit that the only danger you ever really worry about is the possible loss of your anti-oil supporters and the loss of campaign funding. Wherever they lead, you follow. You use the danger argument when it suits your political agenda. If you believe that drilling was safe in January, then you must also believe that the same slant drilling method is safe today. The public is tired of worn-out, meaningless, anti-oil rhetoric and self-serving politicians. What we need is a solution. Remember, you don't just represent anti-oil constituents, you have a duty and responsibility to all constituents. Stop the politics. That's not what we elected you for. And stop turning your back on the rest of us. Thank you.
I have a couple of things I have to correct, and I'm going to do that, and you and I can speak. But do you know how much money the city, you're talking to the city of Santa Barbara, not the county. How much money have we received from oil drilling offshore? Zero. We don't get any money. We would love to get some money. If you can figure out a way to get us millions of dollars, we would love it, but we don't get anything. Secondly, I don't think, and maybe my colleagues can correct me up here, I don't think we took a stand on the Tranquillian Ridge project at all. We didn't do that. And I know maybe, maybe some people did individually, but I didn't. I didn't even quite understand it at that point. I'm starting to understand it better. I know the governor is supporting it and the Lands Commission, so, you know, it's some kind of political thing. I agree with you. But we're your city council, and we didn't take a stand on it. And if you're a resident of the city, we like working for you, but we don't, we didn't do any of that, that you talked about.
Well, I'm reading an article that was printed, and I didn't, I didn't author this article myself, but Mr. Handelman has some follow-up on it, and--
Okay. But I just wanted to correct those two-- Okay, but I just wanted to correct those two major things.
I’d like to say.
We really like to, we’re your neighbors.
I’d like to make one more comment.
Sure.
I have coffee every morning, I’m retired. I’ve lived here since 1962, and through the oil spill and through all that stuff. And I have coffee in the morning at McDonald’s with like seven other friends of mine that are retired and stuff. They all are for oil drilling. I don’t know, I know that a lot of people are out working during the day, and they can’t be here for this kind of stuff and don’t want to be. I don’t even, I feel that I should do something. And like I said, these friends of mine, all the other ones that I have coffee with are for oil drilling, and they think that they’re going to get taxed by the city, or the county, or the state, to make up the difference for all this money that’s available. Instead of having that fill in the coffers, they’re going to have to fill it out of their own pockets.
Well, and I understand, and I, you know, taxing isn’t something that we can do either. People have to vote on it, so just want you to know that. You’re talking to the city council, and I, you know, I understand your concerns and fears and everything else, but I think it’s great that you meet and talk, but just want to make sure that you understand what we’re doing here, and thank you for coming up and bringing that to us.
You’re welcome.
Thanks. Mr. Handelman will be followed by Nathan Alley.
Thank you, councilmembers, for this opportunity to address you today. I was the one who authored Mr. Mang’s statement. It mirrors my testimony at the last county supervisor’s meeting. That was me. Mr. Williams, Ms. Schneider, I propose you postpone this action today until further notice. Aside from perhaps getting you even more favoritism from your anti-oil friends, this action has no actual effect and is wrong. Towards you to my statement were harsh. Your feelings may have been hurt. Our community situation is much harsher. And to address your comment, Mayor Boom, the state is out of money, the county is out of money, Santa Barbara cannot be okay. We rely on trickle-down money from all these sources to keep our sheriffs on the streets, to provide education money, so do not think you’re not getting money from it. That is not accurate. My concern is for the thousands who are suffering much more than just hurt feelings. Self-minded politicians refuse to accept today’s facts and have a deaf ear to the voices of the needy. A solution stares us right in the face. You are seen by many as pre-Columbus political sheep, before and directly after Columbus. Those in power professed that the earth was still flat, rejecting any other premise now today. Despite all the overwhelming evidence that beach soil and pollution does not come from platforms and that slant drilling is environmentally safe, you continue to profess that oil and beaches is coming from platforms and that solution to our problem, our financial crisis, is to ban drilling and patiently wait for several decades for windmills and solar panels to arrive. And don’t forget the blue lines. Things have changed. Political winds have shifted. Perhaps you’d appear more credible if you reexamined your worn-out and pre-Columbus position. We need change. Performing a public service as you do cannot be easy. I know you work tirelessly to perform your duties. This would be admirable from my standpoint if this was to serve the highest needs of the community. The first proposal demonstrates however that although you may work hard, your primary goal is your own political ambitions. I’m almost done. In summary, we now know that ocean pollution comes from massive oil seeps, not from offshore production. We now know that our cleaner beaches today are a direct result from extracting and capturing the oil in reservoirs before it can pollute our shorelines. An atmosphere. We now know that slant drilling is environmentally safe. We now know our state, our county, and our city are in crisis and cannot provide essential services, education, as was the case before the crisis. We know that state, county, and city coffers can be restored simply by safe utilization of offshore resources. Not a single credible and sub达到 case can be made to prove otherwise. I beg of you to figure your anti-oil obligations and do the right thing by all the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your, I assure you, I love a good discussion, no hard feeling. I’m not, you said my feelings were hurt, they aren’t at all. That’s not, that’s not what we do when we try to discuss an issue, so, thank you anyway. Thank you for your information. Nathan Alley?
Any questions?
Nathan Alley will be followed by Abe Powell, and that’s the last speaker. Hi, Nathan.
Good afternoon. Hi, my name is Nathan Alley. Most of you know I’m an attorney with the Environmental Defense Center. First of all, I want to thank you for your comments earlier about the hydro-molten issue. Brian Troutline is working diligently on that, and definitely will be reviewing things in the future. I also want to point out that Linda Cropp would be here today, however, she’s in Washington, D.C., meeting with the federal government about these and other issues, so we’re kind of taking a bi-coastal approach here today. So first, I’ll start off by saying that EDC definitely appreciates this city council’s longstanding commitment and steadfast opposition to renewed federal oil leasing off our coastline. Of course, I’m here today to offer our full support for the proposed language that was authored by Councilmember Williams and Councilmember Schneider. This language is certainly in keeping with the history of our city and with the will of our people. In particular, I would highlight one passage in your staff’s letter to the Mineral Management Service. The city’s general plan states clearly that the city should continue efforts to prohibit new oil exploration, drilling, and production in the channel, and to cause the termination of existing leases and the removal of platform structures. I’ll offer a cheer for that language. And I just want to take one more moment to address something that we hear over and over and over again, and this is the myth that oil extraction technologies have progressed to the state where they’ve essentially eliminated the risk of another major incident like we had in 1969. Unfortunately, there is no such thing as a perfect technology, and there’s no such thing as a foolproof technology. And I would submit that as good as our technology gets, it’s always going to be subject to the whim of the humans who operate it. If we’re actually in a world where the robots are controlling everything, that’s an entirely different problem. I will offer several examples. 1997, here in Santa Barbara, we had the Torch Oil Spill. In that instance, the technology worked perfectly, an automatic shut-off system activated and stopped what could have been an even greater spill. However, a human operator decided that it was a technological error, and he manually overrode the system and started pumping the oil again, and we had a 7,000-gallon spill. We also know that so-called acts of God are out there and we’re essentially powerless to stop them. In 2005, Hurricanes Rita and Katrina destroyed more than 100 oil platforms in the Gulf of Mexico, and there was really nothing we could do about that. Locally, we’re familiar with the Greca Corporation, I know they’re an onshore operator, it’s a little different, but this kind of speaks to the endemic culture of the oil industry. No matter how good the technology gets, we don’t always have a guarantee that it will be used or used properly. Just several years ago, there was an 85,000-gallon oil spill near Santa Maria. This was not because the technology failed, it was rather a problem of management and facilities maintenance. The idea that you could wrap a sock around a stick and plug it in a leaking tank, maybe old technology, but they had newer fixes for that problem, and this is just a matter of corporate will. These and other incidents certainly illustrate the risk of offshore drilling. I don’t need to speak about the inherent and looming threat of climate change, it’s been spoken about before. I just want to close by thanking you all for your continued support in this issue and the letter that you should send. And I would be remiss if I did not plug EDC’s new website. We just overhauled it after several years in the making, and it’s beautiful, you should all check it out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Questions?
Thank you, we have a question from Mr. Francisco.
Thank you. Mr. Alley, since Mr. Williams informs us that the main reason this is on the agenda is because your organization requested it, I’d just like to clarify something. In the summary recommendation, it says that council considered the request of Councilmembers Schneider and Williams to send a letter opposing new federal offshore oil drilling. Now, you support that, I assume?
Absolutely.
You also support new offshore drilling in state waters, is that correct?
No, not necessarily. You are, of course, talking about the PXP project.
Yes, I am.
That is certainly another issue, not exactly related to what we’re talking about today. We are talking about federal leasing in federal waters. However, I would submit that the very premise, and this is the reason why I quoted the letter that staff is proposing to send, we’re talking about the termination of existing leases and the shutdown of existing platforms. And the so-called deal that was brokered, and hopefully will someday still see the light of day, actually does guarantee that existing operations will go away, and that’s something that will not happen under the current scenario, under current laws, and under current contracts. This was really a milestone, potentially, and again, kind of a completely different issue here. We were talking about an existing lease, existing facilities. Here, we’re talking about opening up entirely new leases in federal waters. So I appreciate your question, but we really are talking about apples and oranges.
I have a couple more questions for you. Which waters are closer to shore, federal waters or state waters?
That would be state waters. They extend three miles out from the coast.
Thank you. And so, the deal that your organization brokered with PXP, that would have allowed new drilling in state waters, correct?
It would have opened up some new drilling in state waters, yes.
Thank you. So, if the reason that you brought this before city council today is because of your concern over the dangers of new oil drilling, and if state waters are closer to the shore than federal waters, why are we talking about federal waters? Why aren’t we talking about state?
Well, first of all, I’d like to respond in two ways, and I apologize for taking up so much of your time.
Don’t mind.
But first of all, there actually is a comment deadline that was set by the Minerals Management Service, and so people need to get their comments in on this federal leasing program by a certain date. So that would be the reason why the council members probably brought this item onto the agenda today, because it’s a time-sensitive issue.
I’ll be looking at that issue soon.
And it actually is talking about the five-year offshore leasing program that’s been proposed by the federal government, was the subject of the hearing in August up in San Francisco. Again, completely not related to the potential PXP project. Now, I will talk about that just briefly. I will say, the premise behind at least one portion of that agreement is that by allowing some new production over a short frame of time, you would reduce the risk of a terrible oil spill, such as we saw with Platform Irene in the past, such as we saw in Katrina, as I talked about earlier, and essentially reduce the timeframe over which one of these accidents could happen. So yes, you would be pumping more oil in the short term, but you’d be pumping it for much less time, and therefore ultimately, on balance, reducing the risk of an oil spill or other environmental accident.
And Mr. Alley, I want you to understand that I’m not necessarily speaking negatively of the PXP deal that you worked out, okay? That’s a long and complicated subject that we don’t have time to go into here.
I appreciate that.
What I am pointing out, however, is that according to your deal, there would be new oil drilling in state waters for 14 years, correct?
I wouldn’t actually guarantee that it was going to last entirely 14 years.
But it could.
Could be shorter than that.
It could last 14 years, correct?
So, again.
Is that correct?
That’s correct.
We don’t, excuse me, we don’t do that, and I’m an attorney. We don’t do that to people who come to us.
Madam Mayor.
That’s not in civil or kind.
We don’t usually respond to public comments either, and you’ve felt free to do that. I have some questions to ask. May I continue to ask them?
Yeah, but if you could do it in a nice civil way, we would appreciate it, or we’ll take a little vote up here.
Please do.
Go ahead.
I’ll say that I do appreciate this opportunity to talk.
You shouldn’t treat people like this, I apologize.
I certainly wasn’t prepared to speak on this issue today. First of all, it’s not actually my case. Linda Cropp, who’s our chief counsel, was the one that’s responsible for most of these things.
Sure.
However, I do have some knowledge about it, so I’m happy to share. Once again, there is currently drilling that occurs from this platform. That drilling could extend indefinitely. We were talking about technology earlier. We see technology essentially allowing us to extend our reach further and further and further and extract more and more oil from places we never thought we could before. The Arctic Sea, the Marianas Trench, I’m not sure if they’re actually founding in the Marianas Trench, but in very deep places in the ocean. My point is that currently, that drilling could go on forever. Under the deal that was brokered, it would stop sooner rather than later, and on balance, you would see much less oil being taken out. Now, PXP would probably like to get as much as they possibly could out, but we’re talking about on balance, we’re talking about decades versus potentially 14 years. And again, as we see, the technology is improving, for sure, but we’ve got human error, we’ve got storms, we’ve got unpredictable shifts in the weather that are occurring because of the things that we do, it’s all linked back to oil, unfortunately. And the longer that we’re out there doing that, the longer that we’re opening ourselves up to this risk. And so, this is about risk management, that’s why we’re talking to the federal government about it, it’s really their job. And I’ll stop talking, because I could go on and on forever, you guys probably don’t want to hear me anymore, but I’m happy to answer any more questions. Otherwise, I’ll let Abe get up and say his thing here in a moment.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Abe Powell will be the last speaker. Are you afraid?
Not yet.
My name is John Abraham Powell, I’m the president of Get Oil Out. Heard some very interesting things here today, and want to quote our former president, who also was a former oilman, who said that this nation has a problem, and that problem is that it is addicted to oil. And if we’re going to solve that problem, we’ve got to do two things. The first of which is we’ve got to stop looking in the wrong places for energy. If we keep digging up dinosaurs and putting what’s left up in the atmosphere, we’re headed for real trouble. The second thing is, we’ve got to start using alternatives to fossil fuels to power our society. And I want to, you know, first of all, thank this city council, because I think you’ve provided leadership on both of those fronts. This letter proposed by Mr. Williams and Ms. Schneider, I think, is a good start and a continuation of what the city council has been doing in opposing offshore oil development for many years now, and also the work that the city council has done in incorporating alternative energy here in Santa Barbara’s practice. So there is alternative fuel that is being used by the city, and solar power, and other technologies that are being used by the city of Santa Barbara. This is the kind of leadership we’re looking for from our city council. We want to see that you understand the bigger picture and are working on that from within our community, and I want to thank you all for that. And I support this letter, and I hope you all agree to pass it and send it today. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Powell. Okay, anybody else? Anybody up here? Because we have no more speakers. Mr. House?
I’ll be very brief. I very much appreciate my colleagues bringing this letter to us, I do support it. I think it continues a tradition here in the city of Santa Barbara of protecting our coastline. I think on balance, too, and the staff report identifies a variety of economic issues, but of course, the environmental side of that equation is the highest and most important priority. And I appreciate the exchange we just had, I thought that was pretty interesting, and it’s good to have that kind of discussion and dialogue, but it certainly is an opportunity to reaffirm our commitment to our local environment and our leadership position in the United States and the world. People do look to us to hold up our end of the bargain, and I believe we need to take this stand, and I appreciate the opportunity to do it again.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Francisco. Thank you, Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since we don't really have staff input on this, I have a couple of questions for my fellow council members who introduced this at the onset of EDC. Mr. Williams, you were present at the MMS hearing in January of this year?
April, sorry.
Okay. This report was originally released in January, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So we've had seven months to comment on this?
Maybe you could go through your whole comments, and then I'll answer you.
Okay, here's the question. If this was so critically important to bring before council, and we've had seven months to comment on a 149-page report, why did you wait until there was less than a week before the end of the comment period to bring it to us?
It's a very fair question, Mr. Francisco. Are you done with your questions? Because I'm not going to go back and forth between you and I.
Which is not...
I'm not going to indulge you like that. So if you want to ask your questions, ask all your questions, and I'll answer them.
Mr. Williams, I will be happy to do that. So let's be clear. The first question I have is, why are you bringing this before us today when there's less than a week to respond to a 149-page report?
Sure.
And you've known about it for seven months. No, I'm clarifying what my first question is.
I understand your first question.
My second question is, since this is already on the legislative agenda, and since we've already had two proclamations to this effect, including one less than a year ago, and since the mayor has the ability to write letters on topics that we've already agreed upon in the legislative agenda, why was it so urgent to use city council time for this topic today? My third and final question is, in the letter that was drafted for the mayor to sign, the first sentence reads, "The city of Santa Barbara has reviewed the Minerals Management Service's draft-proposed Outer Continental Shelf Oil and Gas Leasing Program for 2010-2015. When did that occur? I'm not aware of any review by the city of this report."
I reviewed it.
Thank you.
I can, is that all your, all three questions? I can answer all three of those, I believe. First of all, the timing of why now, that's a very fair question. One of the reasons is, is the answer to your first one, which is that staff has been reviewing this internally in the city, and so that takes time. Secondly, there is, this has become, this went to the county, and we were asked to do a companion letter from the county, or to that of the county. And thirdly, because we were on a, quote, "break," unquote, for the last two weeks. If you remember, we did not have two, we had two weeks of no council meetings. In theory, we, of course, had special council meetings to deal with the budget during that period of time, but during that period of time, we were unable to agendize anything further. And so this request actually was earlier, and I would have preferred to actually have it last week or the week before, but that was unable to happen because of our two-week, again, quote, "break," unquote, from normal business. The last question that you had was on the legislative agenda, which is, you know, I think important to ask. You know, why should we take up some time when this is a position that we already have? And the answer, I think, is, why do we review many things that are information-only, essentially, from staff? And the reason is because it's an important matter. It's an important matter to the people of this city. It's an important matter for us to clarify to the world, which was obviously very confused last year because of the Board of Supervisors' temporary reversal of its longstanding position. It's important for us to make sure that the world knows that Santa Barbara is opposed to new federal oil leasing. So I think that answers all your questions. I'll make my own comments as well, which is simply that we should really have, in my mind, two goals when it comes to oil. We need to get rid of existing operations and stop new drilling. And I think that when those can be accomplished, that is the ideal situation. And, you know, obviously, people have asked about Trank Ridge. I think Trank Ridge is an important case where the EDC was able to negotiate a situation where more drilling would be removed than added. So I thought that was an important thing for us to look at, because, you know, we have to exist within the real world. And in the real world, none of us has really said no to any oil unless we stop using all forms of gas-powered transportation and petroleum products. That's ultimately where I'd like to go as a society. And I think the other important part about this is that what the city is concentrated on is getting to alternatives. And I think that shows an immense kind of leadership, that we, you know, I think unlike what our critics are charging us with, we are not the kind of environmentalists that are just saying no. We are the kind of environmentalists that are saying what path we should take as a society. And that path that we should take as a society is to embracing alternative forms of transportation and alternative forms of energy. The solar and wind is not somewhere just in the future. It is happening right now, and it's happening right now because this city and this council has shown leadership on it.
And I wanted to answer the question about MMS and why it says that the city reviewed it. I'm on the MMS. I get a newsletter from them, and I get hard copies as well as of all their, I don't think all their documents, but the ones that they want to share, and this is one that they wanted to share. And I look at it online, too, and sometimes I wonder why I'm reading this, but I think because it's about desert tortoises or stuff like that that happens with MMS. But this, but anything having to do with offshore oil and Santa Barbara Channel, I do read it, so I was very comfortable in signing, I will be comfortable in signing that letter. Ms. Schneider.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for coming in. I think, again, having this public hearing was important, is important, getting the issues out is important, and moving forward of where we go from here is also extremely important. I want to echo my colleagues in terms of looking at alternative ways to get from point A to point B in the use of energy. There's great opportunity out there, and in terms of using of alternative energy, whether it's solar or wind or other forms of green technology, and it takes that new way of looking into trying to find innovative practices to move forward in creating those businesses and other opportunities for us to then engender and make it become mainstream. And I think Santa Barbara is a prime place for that to happen. I, in fact, think there's a lot of experts, no matter what their position is on offshore oil, who can hopefully come together and look at alternative forms of energy. I know a lot of companies that just were oil productions have been doing that now, and I'm very excited about new technologies that can come forward to get us off the oil train and get us off our addiction, because there are renewable sources that can and do work. And it just takes, it takes both political will, and it takes expertise, and it takes a lot of ingenuity to make that happen. So to me, that was part of the reason why having a public hearing was important, just to talk about those things and to follow through with what the county had already done just a few weeks ago. So for, answer some of that question of the timing, that was part of my decision-making. So I want to thank my colleagues for their comments and their support of this. I would be happy to move this item to approve the letter as drafted for the mayor to sign and send off to the Minerals Management Service.
I'll second that.
Okay. And Mr. House, did you have anything else? And then, Mr. Francisco.
I just want to also say, and I think it's got to be on balance, I really, I'm glad that the oil industry is doing the very best they can to have a safe operation in the new technologies, and I'm grateful for that, and I hope that they continue to do that. On the other hand, or at the same time, I really believe that it's up to the city of Santa Barbara to continue to take a lead and really be the environmental leader that we are and continue to make it very clear to anyone who listens where we stand on this issue, and I do support this letter.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I did not mean to imply that you don't read any documents from MMS.
Nothing.
The question here really is, this is a document, this is a draft proposal that has been available for public comment for over seven months. Why was it brought before council today with less than a week to consider it? And in fact, of course, we're not considering it. I mean, no one here has really talked about what the draft proposal actually says, other than in the vaguest terms, and the idea that we have somehow reviewed a 149-page document is absurd. I think that what we're doing here, besides the fact that this issue is completely outside the jurisdiction of the city of Santa Barbara, by signing on to a letter like this claiming to have reviewed a report that we clearly have not, I believe that that is a misuse of the role, the trust, the role of actually considering things before we act, that the people of Santa Barbara trust us to have. So I think, I suppose you could take out that first sentence and just say, well, we haven't actually reviewed the report, but this is the part we dislike, and that would at least be accurate. But I think there were other reasons, things having nothing to do with oil drilling, that this was brought before city council today, and I will not be voting for this misrepresentation of our work.
I think it's important to point out that it is in the general plan, and also, it's in our legislative platform. This is almost, for us, this isn't a huge deal. I know it's a big issue, but it's not, it's already in both of those documents, and you may disagree with that, and that's okay, but I just want you to know it's not that we haven't thought about it.
That is not the issue.
Well, Mr. Williams.
I just would like to reiterate what I just said in answering Mr. Francisco's question quite clearly. We, as a city, did review this. Staff was, has already been working on this. This is not just something that we invented yesterday. Because, because staff already has a legislative platform that says that we, as a city, oppose this, they often work without letting you know everything that they're doing on an issue under which we have already taken a previous position. Staff has worked on this. They did, they did review it. I don't know with what completeness they reviewed it, but I can also tell you that I have also read significant portions of that document, and I think it's pretty clear that there are some major areas that we are opposed to. There are some other areas in the document that this letter does not address, and I think that that's okay, because I'm not sure that we have reviewed those adequately, which is the offshore leasing for wind, wave power, and other items. I would also say that to Mr. House's point, that there is also soon to be a, there is a draft rule on some safety standards for these facilities that MMS is finally listening to us and moving on, and so that's also a positive thing going on currently.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Madam Mayor?
Posed.
No.
Thank you.
You've got a flair for the dramatic.
Yep. We're going to go ahead and talk about our closed sessions, but go ahead.
Item 21, conference with legal counsel regarding pending litigation. Item 22, conference with legal counsel regarding pending litigation. And item 23, conference with legal counsel regarding potential litigation.
Okay, and we'll adjourn out of there. I'll leave it there. Thanks. I'll leave it there, thanks.